All right, I think we'll get the meeting started. Meredith, can you do roll call?
Okay. Fair Lions.
Here.
Teddy.
Here.
Commissioner Rock.
Here.
Commissioner Moss.
Here.
Commissioner Melfick.
Here.
Commissioner Pa is absent and Commissioner Thompson.
Here.
All right, great, we have a quorum, we'll get it started. I just wanted to verify all notices and everything was done correctly. Right, I also want to remind the commissioners that if there's any conflicts of interest or any ex parte communications with any of the applications, please let us know that at the time of that application. And forward, I did, I don't believe we had the meeting minutes
Correct.
for either the twentieth or the third, so we'll move those hopefully to the next agenda. Right? Then we have a preliminary development review with the 111 South Sampson Trail in McCall-Domley School District.
And Travis.
Okay, Travis is going to be making the presentation.
Please.
Okay, Travis?
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, so I'm Travis Burrows with Designless Architects in Meridian, Idaho, working with the McCall-Domley School District. And the proposal is to provide an expansion to the existing Payette Lakes Middle School as stated at 111 South Sampson Trail. The planned expansion will be approximately 6,800 square feet and will include additional classrooms and multipurpose space for the existing student body. And site modifications will include elimination of some of the old impervious play surfaces, reconfiguring bike and pedestrian circulation around the school itself, as well as the improvements to the driveline that will affect the pedestrian and bike access as well as traffic flow. And these are all based on conversations that the city has had with the school district regarding the traffic impact studies. Additions to the building, they will match with the floor materials and colors of the existing building, including a new proposed long-term bicycle parking facility, and that will be incorporated into the existing building near the front entrance. Any new lighting on the building will meet all of the code the city has put forth, as well as any of the landscaping stated in previous conversation will be, will meet the city code as well. And that bit, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I believe there's a team from the school district as well if they are able to answer any questions as well.
Okay, thank you. Meredith, can you put it back on the site plan? So Travis, I'm looking at the the forty, what is that, forty nine hundred square foot addition kind of to the south end of the building?
Correct.
That's smaller than what was previously discussed, isn't it? Wasn't it like, that looks like basically four rooms, wasn't like six or eight previously?
Right, I believe there were two additional classrooms on that end, you're correct.
So it's back farther, okay.
Yeah.
A smaller addition.
And then the east wing, you'll notice that there's, they're no longer planning an addition on that end of the school.
The ones at the top? No, to the east.
The east, yeah, they were going to go off to the, where the, yeah. Okay.
Where the yellow is, right?
Uh, yeah, I see this cursor.
Oh, I see, okay, all right.
Okay, so pretty minimal, other than closing that one end. And you're still going to have kind of the playground area to the south there, and there's still a big buffer from their current access.
That's, that's correct. There will be additional pathways through there, as I stated, they'll eliminate a good portion of that asphalt and the hard surface, and they'll regrade that play area.
Okay.
And then at the top of the page, the other yellow portion is the expansion of the multipurpose room.
Basically enclosing that area.
That's correct, and filling there, yes.
Commissioners, any questions for Travis or the other staff that's here for the school district?
I was mentioning about some improvements with the access roads to and from, I didn't quite, doesn't show what's going on here. I was just curious, or what the plan is.
If you go to the last page of that and highlighted a couple of the locations where it will, they have the pedestrian crosswalks there, and then to the right of the page, there was a bump out, and they'll be just straightening out that driveway that connects through to the Barbara Morgan Elementary School.
Okay. Any other questions for applicants? I mean, I'm kind of looking at, I know when we looked at it before, there was quite a bit more involved, but I mean, I'm kind of seeing that this makes sense without, you know, future development, without knowing exactly what the future development is in the back and how that's going to affect that driveway in the future, but that's nothing we really need to look at at this one with that small of an addition, in my opinion. I think that makes a lot of sense, obviously we'll see the full plans and everything going forward, anything, but it's far enough back from the road, any commissioner have any thoughts on that, or? Okay Travis, I think looks good, I would say, continue working with staff, commissioners, any other thoughts? Liz, any thoughts from you on that one?
Nope, nothing from my end.
Okay Travis, yeah, I would say, continue working with staff, and I mean, I think it looks pretty good.
Okay, great, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll move on to the consent agenda, there's quite a few items on the consent agenda. Is there any items that you need commissioners would like to be?
Thank you.
Like to be pulled off the consent agenda and discussed individually, or does everything look good? I didn't see.
Consent agenda, you can acknowledge that.
One of the longest ones I think I've seen, probably. It's a two pager. Make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda? Second, all right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, have you seen?
And then?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry, we got somebody, needs to be muted?
It might be Liz.
No, Liz said aye, but somebody said.
Liz said aye.
Oh, okay. Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
New, any opposed? All right, hearing none, the consent agenda is approved, if anybody is here regarding consent agenda, your item has been approved. All right, and we'll go on to old business. Now we have subdivision twenty five oh one, to be determined, Woolley and Hearthstone Avenue, we got a James Gillian for Juniper Mure. Thanks, yeah, you'd like to come up?
Commissioners, I'm Greg Tankersley with Brett Sine, engineers, three, two, three, Dan Arden, Hates, C, and Paul. I'm here representing Richard and Jillian Hill, they're attending virtually, so they're available to answer any questions that you may have going forward, or as we work through this, or discuss. So, you know, the last time we were here, we presented the project, I don't know how many details we need to go in about that, it's five lots. They average about an acre in size, fronting Woolley Lane, Woolley, Woolley Street. The allowable density for our four zoning in the area is, would be upwards of twenty lots, if we were to stay with that, if you remember. When we were here the last time, we were asked to look at the idea of potential building envelopes as part of the project, and there were some concerns about driveway grades, so we provided an updated exhibit showing potential building envelopes. We met on site with the city arborist to discuss the building envelopes, as well as the trees and the locations of the potential home sites, and the, the results of that conversation were very favorable. Kurt's comments were the proposed building envelopes and driveway layout worked well with the natural character of the site, providing ample opportunity to work with and around significant natural amenities such as quality trees and existing topography. So we, I think we did a pretty good job identifying those building envelopes on, on this plan that you can see on your screen right now. We also added the shared driveways and looked at the slopes. The, the average of the, there will be some areas within the driveway where the topography is slightly steeper, but for the most part, the, the average slopes are in the four to five percent range, and they do not exceed the city maximum driveway slopes of ten percent. So, we're pretty confident about, about those, and the ability to make them work with the potential home sites. If you walk the property, it's, it's pretty interesting and unique. I, I wonder if the Spring Mountain Ranch developers actually went through at some point in time and cleared the pathways where they intended the roadways to be, but the, the driveways as proposed tend to follow where you can, you can identify a clearing of the trees on the site. We also were asked to further review intersection site distance. We provided exhibits showing two shared driveway locations off of Woolley. One of them was at the intersection of Chip Shot Drive, and we talked about that at the, the last meeting about the challenges associated with providing access to the site while minimizing access onto Woolley. And the intent of our original design was to access lots one and two from Chip Shop Drive rather than Woolley. We recognized that that was a less than ideal situation, but also trying to respect some of the natural features as well as work with some of the constraints of the site, we felt like that was appropriate location and alternative. We also provided site distance analysis for lots three and four shared driveway, which Meredith is sharing on the screen there. Since providing those, we did receive some additional comments from, from the city engineer. One of them was that there was some concern still with the shared driveway to what one and two as proposed. So, since then, I've, I prepared an additional exhibit, and can I share that? It's just more a combination of the building envelope sheets that we provided, as well as site distance to lots three and four, and then an alternate approach to one and two from Woolley Avenue. And based upon accessing from Woolley Avenue in the both of the locations, we're confident that intersection site distance can be met, which is at two hundred and eighty feet coming from the west, where you're crossing the lane of traffic, and it's two hundred and forty feet coming from the east where you're turning into the lane of traffic. And the intent of those distances is to provide ample travel down the driveline where the oncoming traffic is coming from, to, for the people at the intersections of the driveway to make, you know, an educated maneuver or safely maneuver onto the street. And so, those site distances are provided based upon a speed limit of twenty-five miles an hour, and, and you can see on the exhibit where there are clear sight distances for, for those. So we have not, this new alternate driveway is just something that we've come up with recently, it was not shared with staff. But I know that the applicant spoke with the city engineer yesterday, and I, I believe that something along the li, this lines may be acceptable. We will, as a result of this meeting, if we move forward with the project, one of the conditions of approval will be working with the city engineer to obtain final engineering for the project, so there will be an opportunity to talk about that and work through that if the proposed solution seems to still be questionable. But based on the, the configuration, the site angles and areas that you can see on that plan, as well as the low volume of the driveways approaching onto Woolley, from the, from the residences, we're pretty confident with the proposed alternative. I think it's important to remember, if we go through the staff report, that, you know, this application complies with all the subdivision design standards and zoning code requirements. And it's also supports the goals within the comprehensive plan, so I think it checks all of the boxes, it's a, it's a good application. The density that's proposed is significantly less than what's allowed, and with the preservation of the trees around the building envelopes and working with the parks, or excuse me, the city arborist to preserve as many mature trees as possible, provides probably the best alternative for, for this property. So, I stand to answer any questions, or I also have Richard Hill on the line if he'd like to add anything.
Great, thank you. Real quick, commissioners, I forgot, this is a public hearing on this item, and I forgot to open the public hearing, so I make a motion, we open the public hearing and allow all the information provided to be included in the public hearing information.
So, good.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Yes, all in favor.
Sorry about that, okay, and then one thing I also wanted to note, you mentioned that you can do this later, but I thought it'd be good now if you have any other comments. You mentioned that was designed for a twenty-five mile an hour speed limit area, and I'm basically certain that's a, posted as a twenty mile an hour speed limit currently. Okay. For additional information, I drive it all the time, and it's posted as a twenty. So, notice it's good that it's designed for a twenty-five mile. So, okay, with that, any questions from the commissioners for the app? Great.
So, if it's, okay, so twenty, twenty makes it more acceptable for your two hundred and eighty feet, I guess, right?
Yeah.
Or I could ask for a minute.
Brought that section of the ASHTO manual with me, and is it?
Yeah, will you repeat it louder, Dave?
The, the change in posted speed limit, or the revised posted speed limit makes your site distances more acceptable for the manual?
Yes, yes, for the, for the, the movement that required two hundred and forty feet, that's now reduced to one hundred and ninety-five. And then for the, the other one that was two hundred and eighty.
Just from going from twenty-five to twenty?
Yeah.
But it's always been.
It's just because the vehicles in the, that are traveling down those road are slow, driving slower, it provides more time for the people to make adequate turning movements. So, shoot. Yes, and the other one gets reduced from two hundred and eighty to two hundred and twenty-five.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant or Greg, before we go to staff report? Okay, thank you, Greg, thank you. I'm sorry, public comment will come later. Unless you're part of the application. Mary, staff report?
Okay, okay, Mary Todd, city planner, Mr. Tankersley summarized pretty well, and as I wrote within the project update memo, we did receive the building envelopes as requested, and that note from the city arborist and parks director Kurt Wolf about the ability to protect quite a few large density trees that are standing out there, so that you have that building envelope exhibit, and then you do have the site distance exhibits, as well as this new one that I've specifically not given myself one to look at, so that no one can claim I've looked at it, and then Morgan does have her eyes on it over there, as well as some updated comments from looking at those site distance exhibits. Those were basically your only points of wanting more information during the previous public hearing. So again, as a reminder for the public, this is an application to split an existing lot into five parcels. It is the unplatted remainder block of the Spring Mountain Ranch subdivision. We found no information in the Spring Mountain Ranch subdivision records that anything was intended for this location other than possibly an entry feature. There was one conceptual drawing that showed this as an extension of Hearthstone with many, many multifamily buildings in it. But I imagine over the last twenty-five, thirty years, somebody decided that that was probably not a wise decision, given the wetland that's there, given the big pile of rocks that's probably under some of these trees. And that's, it's probably more suitable for single-family development, at least in this time in this market. Last time when you went through the preliminary plat criterion, you really just determined that you needed more information on impacts to natural features by seeing proposed building envelopes, as well as any impacts on traffic circulation by seeing how turning movements out of the shared driveways would work. So we've received that information, and we will go through those wonderful criteria one by one again, just for good measure. Whenever you feel prepared to do that, we also have a number of community residents in the room. We received two photos and a video from the driveway locations from Paul Christensen of the neighborhood who's here tonight. They provide public testimony, I hope you were able to access that earlier today through a link that I sent out. Video testimony is a little bit challenging, as I can't include, include a moving picture in a PDF yet, but I will leave that up to the technology wizards in the world to give me that power in the future. I can play that video if you would like, or Bill, if you're hearing me and want me to play the video into the ether, I can do that as well. So, that's a question.
Mr. Chair, would you like me to respond?
Yes, please, Bill.
So, my understanding here is that we have a video that we want to enter into the record?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, so it would need to be played, can you play it, share your screen and play it, and then have it, will it be recorded?
I think so.
Okay, that makes sense to me. Kind of unusual, but we'll do it.
Could this be part of public testimony?
Um, I think we can just play it into the record, since we've got it. And I've noted that it's made in the neighborhood public. Has been played into the record.
Good.
But we can reference it again when Mr. Christensen comes up to comment. And I'll stand for any questions.
Right, commissioners, any questions for Meredith at this point? Right. Morgan, engineering.
Hello, everybody, hello commissioners, taking a look at this new exhibit. Well, first I'll say, I started with reviewing the exhibits that are provided in the packet with the original driveway location identified off of kind of the chip shot approach, and the secondary shared approach further down Woolley where the existing sewer utility easement is, where it's kind of cleared already, and I did have concerns about that access that was off of chip shot and the limited kind of site distance that was available, just because of how it's constructed naturally. And there's not much, there wasn't much visibility as it was shown in the site distance triangle provided. So I did ask for an updated location, and I did speak to the applicant yesterday, and where they're showing this new application location seems like what we, we spoke about, there is a flat spot that is close to the chip shot approach. And this would meet driveway standards as long as it is ten feet separated from that approach, and at least five feet from the property line. The improved access location does provide more site distance, and Greg is correct that it does meet the site distance triangle lengths for a twenty-five mile per hour speed zone, and Woolley is posted at twenty, mostly due to the curves, and just how that functions in the winter time. So, from a preliminary glance, it does look better, in my opinion, to kind of what we were discussing. And I did talk about this with our street superintendent who does the snow plowing operations in the city, and this would be one of the preferred locations if it needed to be on Woolley, but we can keep talking with the applicant too, if if they want to move this access point around at all. I'll stand for any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Morgan?
In conditions of approval, you have more engineering review to do?
I have not provided a final engineering review for this, or a final engineering approval for this project, since we just got this exhibit, because it was kind of late notice when I sent my comments over, but that would basically include reviewing this and seeing if there's any other items needed.
If I can comment, Chairman, currently within the staff report, your conditions of approval say pending engineering review. I would just note that if you make any decision tonight, please convert that condition to prior to scheduling a hearing before the McCall City Council, or prior to approval of the preliminary plat, receive engineering review and/or receive final engineering approval, one of those things. I can restate that for you later on when you need it.
All right, commissioners, any other questions for Morgan on engineering? Okay, with that, this is a public hearing, we will open up to public comment. Again, remind everybody, public comment is up to three minutes, and we would like you to state your name and address. And so we'll start with, is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? If you're on the phone, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Any online or on the phone that wish to comment? Okay, is there anybody on you that wishes to comment? Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kathy Largen and my address is ten eighty-five Chip Shot Drive. Um, first question is, are all of the five lots single family homes? Yes?
Yes.
Okay. And the second question is, is on the map that you showed, it shows a, a red line that goes all the way down Chip Shot on the, um, the project. Is that at the actual boundary of the surveyor, the red line on there?
We really can't answer questions now. The applicant will respond back to them, so we can't really go back and forth on questions. But please state your question, do it get answered later, just so you know.
Okay, those are my questions.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Any other comment? I guess if you'd like, please. Or if you could please state your name and address and explain your hand me notebook first.
Um. Paul Christiansen, thirteen ninety-five Divot Lane. Um, resident full-time for eleven years and a property owner and taxpayer for twenty-five years in McCall. And, uh, thank you Commissioners and, uh, thank you, city employees and residents, um, for me to be able to make my presentation. That was my video and I think once I explain a little bit, then you'll be able to relate to the video. Um, the proposed two driveways onto Woolley Avenue will negatively impact the already dangerous traffic pattern. Woolley Avenue is a major east-west access to downtown McCall and Payette Lake. Residents and tourists from Spring Mountain Ranch, the woodlands, Hearthstone, the cottages, the meadows development all use Woolley Avenue. There's also the Woolley Boardwalk entrance, which is, which enters and exits onto a Woolley right across from Divot Lane. Um, the speed limit is twenty miles an hour. I objectively, not subjectively, I objectively know that that is regularly ignored. My subjective evaluation, which I guess is actually objective, is while I was doing the video, there was a police officer just below Divot. And I was on the boardwalk. Every vehicle coming down was slamming their brakes on as they saw the police officer. So obviously they can go from thirty-five to twenty by the time you see him. The two driveways proposed to access Woolley are at blind curves, which you saw in the video, increasing the danger of an already or the danger that's already present on Chip Shot going in. Divot, Divot will be now expanded and will become one with Denali with the approved, uh, fourteen home development, which is west of Divot. So that's another fourteen cars times two plus R fourteen plus our, um, forty-plus homes in Timberlost Six, which utilize, um, Chip Shot. The proposed development west of Divot will, like I say, add an additional fourteen, uh, town, townhomes. All residents of the new townhouses plus Timberlost Six homeowners will exit and enter onto Woolley Avenue. Then you need to add the walkers, the bicyclists, the strollers, um, that are regularly using Woolley coming off the boardwalk and trying without a, um, pathway into town and just go up there and spend some time on Woolley and you can see how busy our road is there. So I am deeply concerned about the safety of drivers, bikers, walkers using Woolley Avenue. I oppose adding any additional traffic to Woolley Avenue. Yep, okay, fifty years of working in the emergency medical field has convinced me to do whatever necessary to mitigate potential injury and fatalities. Thank you. Any questions?
Uh, can't go back and forth at this point. We'll answer some of your questions after, or the applicant will. Uh, any other quick?
Hi, my name is Sandy Fall. I'm at fourteen sixteen Birdie Drive. Um, I am the HOA president for Timberlost Six and have been working with the project that was mentioned. Um, we call it the Divot Lane Project. We've been working with the city and the developer of this fifteen-town home, um, proposal as to how best for them to access their property. The city made it perfectly clear that they wanted one entrance, not two where Divot is. And that they would want it to line up with Denali. That's that project. My question is, if the city doesn't want two entrances side by side, why would they consider a driveway in Chip Shot? And a third one down Woolley? We've spent a lot of time on this Woolley project, the Divot project and the impact. So that's my question. Thank you.
Any else in the audience who wish to comment? Is there anybody else online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? And if you're on the phone and you're muted, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Hey, you're in, and we will close the public comment section. Um, great. Would you like to respond back?
Thank you. Uh, so just kind of going down the list here. So there's a question about the boundary in the red line. I believe that's referencing that it's a kind of a pink magenta line that we've shown on the, the exhibit. And that is the surveyed right away. So that would be the property boundary. I believe, I'm not completely sure, but I believe, uh, Chip Shot Drive is a four-foot right away. I'd have to double check that, but that's why it probably seems close to the road because it's a narrower than standard city right away. Uh, in regards to the video, I actually drive this route almost daily on my way back from the coffee shop. And so today, while driving back, I observed the, the different site distances and, and things like that. And I think it's easy to, you know, take a video kind of at certain angles. You know, I can take pictures of the property that would be a disadvantage. You can take videos from certain points. The zooming of the video, the, the angle of it and all those different things that can limit or, you know, convey information as it's intended perceived by the person that created the video. We've created an exhibit that shows, you know, from the earth's surface horizontally, um, how those site distances are met. Um, and, you know, their recommendations for site distance come from ASHTO. It's an industry standard that's used across the country for recommendations on to, um, how to design, um, roadways and intersections and, you know, including driveways and, uh, you know, based on those recommendations, which is the, the tool that we use for guidance, they, they meet those. So, um, uh, a dangerous traffic pattern, I, yeah, it's definitely, um, one of the, um, arterials in town. Think because of that, there's been some, um, thought put into pedestrian access and separating the pedestrians from the roadway, um, through the use of the, um, boardwalk um, in front of this property. So you, you know, we're not seeing pedestrians that are actually traveling along the frontage of this property. Um, again, there are blind curves, but there are adequate site distances based upon where those curves are located. Um, you know, with those things in mind, you know, you, we need to provide access to the property. And really, if it was a five lot subdivision, you could look at five access points onto Woolley. And in an attempt to try to, um, create a more ideal situation, they've been consolidated and, um, and minimized to two shared access points in what we think are the most ideal locations. Um, uh, a little bit of discussion about the Divot Lane project, you know, I'm not really privy to that. That's, uh, that's not this project that we're, we're discussing at this point in time. Um, one entrance point for fourteen lots is a new roadway connecting to a city street. We're, we're not talking about a driveway. So at some, some place on this property, there has to be allowed access to connect to it. Because it can't be accessed from Chip Shot Drive. And, um, and that, so there needs to be a location where it can, can come in from there. So that's, that's what we're trying to do by, by creating that. So, um, I think it's, it's unique in that, that matter and it is two, two driveways, but there are also several driveways down along, um, Woolley as it continues into town. And, uh, they're not consolidated. They're side by side by side all the way to Davis. So I, I think, uh, there's been a conscientious effort in to try to minimize impacts to Woolley, um, as well as the surrounding neighborhoods by limiting the number of driveways and, um, working diligently to preserve open areas around the property and with the intent of helping to screen any improvements that, that take place. So, um, I don't, Richard, do you have anything that you would like to add to that?
No, I, I think you've summed it up nicely, Greg. Thank you.
Any other questions for me?
Greg, based on your, based on your building envelopes, what size residences do you think will be constructed in here?
Uh, so those building envelopes, um, they, when you look at them, they provide more than half of the property as open space. Um, so if we think about, you know, standard R four lot setup, that would be a quarter acre property. So I, I would say that the building envelopes, I don't remember the exact numbers, but they more closely resemble, you know, having like a quarter acre postage stamp in the middle of the property. And so, um, they would, they would allow, I mean, in the area, right, we work with local architects, hopefully that understand preserving trees and, and different things like that. And the homes are developed around rocks and trees and different features on that site. So, you know, I'm not saying that they're going to be a certain size, but I, I would think that they would be comparable to every other home that's within the Spring Mountain Ranch development. So, answer your question.
What, um, that's like between two thousand and six thousand, but
Sure.
I'm trying to, um, trying to get like, how many bedrooms? Okay, that's fine.
I mean, the, the project intends to be in compliance with the Spring Mountain Ranch CCRs. So whatever is allowed in, in there, it, it would be allowable for this property. The nice thing is instead of having, you know, I don't know what the average lot size in Spring Mountain is, probably half acre, I would guess in most instances. So we would be looking at over ten home sites if we, if we looked at it that way. So.
That's fair. Except for your wetlands.
The wetlands?
Yeah. That's it.
Anything, anything else?
Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioners, any other questions for staff? Morgan, Meredith, or Apken, anything before we close the public comment? Send go to deliberations.
I have a couple of things, Chairman.
Oh, yes.
Um, so relating to the fourteen townhomes that you know nothing about, you know, nothing about them because you have not received pre-application nor a formal application for that development. Um, so if and when you ever hear that, uh, that today's hearing is not part of that public hearing, please take note of that information, but that project has been working with, um, staff, specifically not Morgan, because she has recused from that project. Um, so with the Public Works Director Nathan Stewart, um, in order to figure out within the law that we have and the code that we have, um, how does that property gain access? The same way with this project, we're obligated to find a way for the project to access, um, to serve. In this case, much less dense development than is available. Again, as iterated in the previous public hearing, um, for this project, of course, the ideal scenario for the city and for safe access for all users would be some form of access on Chip Shot, but that is not a power that the city possesses. Uh, we cannot force access to be taken off of that street as it is privately owned and privately maintained. Question was asked and answered on that one. Um, so given what frontage we have on Woolley and the fact that an enormous, um, wetland exists on the other probably likely location for some sort of driveway to be placed, um, we're really dealing with the best scenario of not amazing options. Um, and given that we meet ASHTO standards with the design as submitted or subject to engineering review, um, we don't really have a, a veteran higher road design authority than the ASHTO standards, um, because our community decided to adopt those ones. So if the engineers with the stamps and the liability for anything are, are saying that it meets the engineering standards, um, that's, that's typically the, the burden that we have to cross with that one. But we can answer any questions on that. Morgan, do you have any additional comments on this?
Um, I would just say that this, this does meet kind of the intent of the access management guidelines also. Like Greg mentioned, it could have been five individual accesses onto Woolley since we can't deny access. So combining them into two accesses onto Woolley and one off of Hearthstone, it, it kind of meets the intents of the access management guidelines by trying to consolidate those points as much as possible on a collector or arterial level roadway.
Right, Commissioners, any other questions for staff or the applicant before we close the hearing? Okay, I make a motion, we close the public hearing. Second, motion is second. All in favor? All right.
Hi.
Any opposed? All right. Commissioners. Thoughts? I personally, considering the density that could happen or the density that is zoned for that area and could happen and hopefully that was planned for originally. I do think this is a much less intrusive, dense project, probably the least dense we'd probably see. I mean, and most Commissioners hadn't seen it, but years ago, there was a proposal on that or preliminary proposal that was much higher density. So I was happy to see the, maybe five lots, it's a lot less. So, um, and I think combining the, the access points, I, I do like the one closer to Chip Shot better now. Farther away from the Chip Shot, I had a little concern, but I think there's, there, I, I then considering what they're having to deal with, it's probably the least impactful that could happen, might.
Yeah, I agree with that, the, the way that, um, the access road on the west end is that's not tied in with, with Chip Shot. It's unfortunate. I mean, it seemed like there's a real opportunity to work with this developer, but I know that's not, that's not our purview. That's, you know, homeowners association, whoever owns Chip Shot, there's an opportunity to have control access and work with the developer on this, um, that being what it is. There needs to be access provided. And so I think this is probably the next best. Which is my main, main concern is how it tied in before. And so this has kind of changed that.
And Chip Shot is a privately owned road.
Yes.
Privately maintained, yes.
I think my, uh, I think the applicant has done a good job of actually coming back with the stuff we've requested with information. With Davis being born up, we all get the opportunity to drive Woolley a lot these days. And, um, I, I think we, at one point, Richard, we discussed maybe a limit on short-term rentals. Um, it would ease my mind a lot because like lots three and four could conceivably, the reason I asked about the size of house of
Yeah.
work in a house full of ten people, that's ten cars that come, come out that entrance at any one time. So that would be my only, uh, wish that we could incorporate into conditions.
Yeah, we can't force them to.
Nope, we can't, but he can agree to it.
And remember, deliberations don't prompt applicants to get into discussion.
Yeah, we can't have.
You can't do that.
Liz, Sam, Tony thoughts?
Yeah, I'm with.
Yeah, I'm with, with everybody, I think, you know, considering what it could be and considering that we need to provide access, that this is the best of available options that, that we can implement. I also too appreciate the applicant, uh, providing us the, the topography and building envelopes and, and doing the tree analysis. So we can feel a little better about, you know, what will actually go there, um, when, when stuff starts getting built. So, um, yeah, in general, I'm, I'm in agreement with what everybody said.
Yeah?
Additional comments?
Don't, any extra thoughts? Okay, with that, Mary, do we have that lovely checklist items that we go through?
Yeah.
Well. Wanted to avoid any issues in the future.
So the commission, if you're ready for me to walk you through the criteria. The commission must find that the proposed plat is consistent with the standards. So you must not find that the proposed plat is not consistent with the applicable general and specific plans as specified in Title III of the code or Title IX of the code or the comprehensive plan. So that's criteria one. Is it in compliance with Title III, which is this planning and zoning code, Title IX, which is the subdivision code, or the comprehensive plan?
I do believe it's in compliant with Title III, IX, and the comprehensive plan, based on the items presented.
Agree.
You must find that the designer improvement of the proposed subdivision is consistent with the applicable general and specific plans. So this would be any plans referenced in your staff report or other plans adopted by the city that I forgot to reference.
Believe it's compliant with all plans presented.
You have any why?
It's with everything that we have seen. Presented.
E three, the site must be physically suitable for the type of development.
I would say, go ahead.
But they're going less than R four, uh, capacity. I think that allows flexibility with that type of site or the subdivision site area. So I think that that works for me.
It went from where to R four, so R four now, the progression R four right now, where, where was it before?
It's closer to one unit per acre.
Or less than that. I believe it does comply with that, it's less dense than it could be.
Yep, I would say, yeah.
E four, the design of the subdivision or proposed improvement, um, must not be likely to cause substantial environmental damage or substantially unavoidably injure wildlife and their habitat. And why?
I think with the lower density, you know, um, the setbacks and the open space that's around it would have the least amount of impact versus the higher density that's possible for that property.
E five, the design of the subdivision or the type of improvement must not be likely to cause serious public health problems.
I mean, with the, the traffic concern, I, the sight lines, the crest line provided, um, and that, that's based off an objective specification, right? So ASHTO, that those fight is considered engineers, I feel pretty good about that being adequate.
Give me my serious health problems.
Anything that could cut in nature waters. It would be dangerous, I think. And I do think with it being designed at a twenty-five mile hour, mile per hour, you know, sight distance and that it's posted twenty. Hopefully people drive within that, but as we can do, it is posted below the criteria or the information that they've designed it on.
COVID outbreak will occur on this property.
That would be serious health.
Okay, E six, the design of the subdivision or the types of improvements must not conflict with easements acquired by the public at large for access through reuse of property within the proposed subdivision in this connection. The city may approve plat if it finds that alternate easements for access or reuse will be provided and that these will substantially, be substantially equivalent to ones previously acquired by the public. This subsection shall apply only to easements of record or to easements established by judgment of a court of competent jurisdiction and no authority is hereby granted to a legislative body to determine that the public at large has acquired easements for access through or use of property within the proposed subdivision.
The only easement is the sewer and that's not being affected, correct?
Correct, yeah, I don't think there's any other easements that it affects anything else's. Should be compliant to that.
The proposed subdivision must be in compliance with all other ordinances or laws of the city.
I believe it's compliant with all that, and I'm sure we would hear that. I'm not aware of any other items that would be conflicting with it. Well, yeah, we didn't, and it's just one's gonna need a trace.
But wait, there's more.
Oh, it's three.
E eight, the proposed subdivision must be in, oh wait, no, that's a duplicate, congratulations.
I was gonna say, I thought we had.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, no.
So in making any recommendation, uh, or in any of your final deliberations, if you have any master plans or zoning comments that you wish to make on the application or conditions of approval that you would like to be met prior to city council or prior to submission for a final plat application, now would be your time to discuss those things. Um, and then I do have a sample condition for your consideration. If you would like to fix that engineering condition before you make a decision.
Um, I mean, prior to that one item that needs to be addressed, I mean, I think it fits pretty much everything. I do, again, like the lower density compared to what it could potentially be and what it was originally at the concept to be. And I think this is about as good as that property is going to get with its topographies, limitations. I think that's the best, low impact is we can hope for on that property. I think they've done a good job with the site setbacks, the, or so much of site setbacks, but the building setbacks, a lot of open space between the lots. It's kind of my thoughts, anybody else, any other concerns, thoughts? I mean, size acreage, McCall typically is going to have thirty units on it or more. So any other questions? If not, um, other than with the updated information for the final engineering approval?
Yes, your sample condition would be prior to any site work or submission of a final plat application, the applicant shall receive final engineering approval.
Open for a motion.
Before we do that, do we, do we need to do a second public hearing?
You can decide whether you wish for there to be one. I think because of substantial public interest in this application, it would be fair to have a second public hearing, but it is up to this board.
What do you gain by a second public hearing?
If there's any voicing of concerns to sustain related to this application to the city council, uh, the, it retains the right of the public to do that.
So somebody will come up after this?
They would not come to planning and zoning, but they would go to the planning or the city council.
Obviously.
So the council approval or addressing this item would be a public hearing and not consented yet?
Even if it weren't a public hearing, it would still be like an agenda item, a business agenda item. So it would be reviewed, it would just eliminate any time for new evidence or testimony. So I, I think it's safe to leave it open because we still have final engineering approval and items to receive on that. And that gives the, the community more time to see this updated driveway example and then comment on it.
Makes sense.
Yeah.
So the one question is, it's, it's inherent, it's already.
Yes.
That is, that would be, okay.
So the second public hearing isn't here, you would have to take an additional action to recommend removal of it, yeah.
So I move to recommend approval of subdivision twenty-five oh one to the McCall City Council with the staff recommended conditions of approval with the following modifications as noted. Does that work?
That works.
Second. All right, you have a motion and a second for approval with conditions as noted. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then motion is approved. Okay. We'll move on to additional use permit twenty-three oh, excuse me, twenty-three ten. Ten twenty-two Bitterroot, Brent Peterson, for a short-term rental. This is a public hearing, so I make a motion, we open the public hearing. Motion is second, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Okay, with that, I think Brent or?
Yes, you have, you have Brent on the four megatelevisions and then you have the hills.
Welcome and, and thank you. Uh, I think mostly what the conversation was last time was more information about our noise-aware devices. Uh, so my colleagues Joe and Kelly Hill are there. Joe and I conducted some experiments and I think there's some, again, last time, everything was mostly settled except for the noise-aware devices. And so in your report, we did some studies and more information about that. I believe my colleague Joe is there prepared to kind of present more about, uh, those noise-aware devices. And, uh, he and or I can answer any questions you have about those. And thanks for consideration.
Okay, Brent, there was one thing, oh, go ahead, if you want, yeah, go ahead.
Just while I'm up here, I'm Joseph Hill, two seven eight Rawhide Loop. And I was part of the, the noise-aware study with Brent. That way we can at least understand and get a better assessment of how the systems work. Robert, you might as well finish your question, you had a question?
No, that's fine.
So it'd be great to get an understanding of what you guys, um, gleaned out of the information that was provided, just so that I can actually speak to you guys with some intent. Did you have an opportunity to go through the information, listen to any of the videos that were produced? You did? Did or did not?
I did.
All right.
Are you using these in any of your other?
We are.
Tools at this point?
We are.
And how have the, those neighbors reacted to the compliance?
How the neighbors to the compliance or the, the actual homes using the noise aware?
The neighbors of the homes using, because that's really where the noise complaints come from, I think.
I personally.
I guess this, has using this system lowered any complaints?
They have, absolutely.
Made my question clearer.
Yes. So through the, through the process, we actually used to use something called Noise Aware, it's another product. The one that we currently are utilizing is called Minute or Minute. And in order to, to have a better effective understanding of how the systems work, in order to kind of recreate and have a baseline measurement, went through and we took some of the, the general items that we would find that would create noise on a pretty consistent basis. So we used a, a leaf blower, I used an air compressor, I used a boombox. And then we also utilized, uh, people having conversation and then getting boisterous. And one of the tools I was able to find, fortunately enough, that actually had a dual purpose, was an applicat, an app that I was able to download on my phone, which was called Decibel X. And the nice thing about Decibel X is that it recorded, it does both the recording of the audio while displaying the actual decibel reading of what it's picking up, as well as being able to actually create a video, which is what I was able to present. And that way, we have both the statistical analysis of what the actual decibel range was, as well as being able to actually show the process in play. And one of the things that we, we discovered was, you know, wi- with the location of where the unit was, being able to kind of go, you know, whether it's fifty feet or a hundred feet, the sound absolutely does decrease. And during the process of what we were able to kind of determine with the preset or like the preset, um, default settings that we received from Minute, it was actually pretty difficult to achieve a ten-minute duration for the system to trigger. Now, one of the nice things that it did do was when we actually hit the baseline of, of a ten-minute, which was the original or the initial point where a person, a guest would be contacted, it would send off a, a text message, we would receive it, and then I would be notified. And I'd say, oh, okay, I ended up getting the information, we're too loud. Now, one of the things that we've discovered kind of in the process was up to, let's say, ten PM, we had the noise setting. And I think that was on, if we go through that, yeah, let's go back through.
Since the one that said it ninety decibels inside eighty-five outside.
So the way that we originally received the setup from Minute was that the indoor noise was set to ninety decibels. The outdoor noise was eighty-five, duration ten minutes and quiet hours on, quiet hours being ten PM to eight AM. And the other thing that this system allows is different variations on noise alert. So when you have a noise disturbance, we have options that we can turn on or off. And the way that we currently initially had it set up, we have the SMS text on so that a guest would receive a text message. And we also have an auto call feature that will call. So you'll, they'll get a text and a phone call if we have that turned on. And then there's also another option where the flash in sound that's on the device will go. So you'll actually have flashing lights and a sound notifying the people like, hey, you guys are a bit too loud. So this was the, the way that we had the, the actual current setup when we first received it. And there's the first alert, second alert, third alert. Now, one of the things that I went through, just to get a baseline understanding of what decibel averages are, I found something online. And I don't think, based on kind of my conclusion on what this says right here, this is kind of like an industry standard. I think that this gave me an idea. However, I think when we were using either a vacuum cleaner However, I think when we were using either a vacuum cleaner or a leaf blower, we weren't able to actually hit these numbers with the decibel reading. And so even though that I incorporated this into our chart, I think more often than not, unless it's a much heavier leaf blower or more powerful leaf blower. For instance, I don't think the average leaf blower, for instance, would hit the targets that it says here at, and I think like 90 to 100, that's pretty loud. That's very loud to actually get to that, to that point. So on the next slide that we had in after this one, this is where I added myself as well as Brent Peterson into this, into this study that we had done. So I added his information. I had my information in there. And then the next, the next example that we have, 03.5, this one was the actual noise incident report that we had. Now, what we currently show it with the red dashed line happens to be our nominal, nominal baseline settings of of what the presets were. And even as you see right here, in order to kind of achieve at 9:10 AM, it barely touched on the 90, on the 90 decibels. And so knowing kind of what the history was, the overall recording that we've noticed at this house in comparison to potentially other ones was significantly lower. And which I have to say, well, it was nice to see that we did not have as many incident reports and actually notifications to guests at this particular location. Now we have indoor and outdoor units. You have one that's inside the living room and then you have one on the back deck. And that second sheet, that one should be four. So this one actually shows motion and it doesn't give us a whole lot of, of true benefit apart from that we can see that there's physical activity present at that time. So then in order to, to start our test, what I ended up doing, and I don't know how easy it would be. I don't even know if you guys are, are interested in seeing any of the videos. I ended up doing some calibration just to get a general idea of how the system works. I did an air compressor, a leaf blower and a boombox and that way you can actually see what, you know, what most of us know how loud a leaf blower gets. And that way I, I started from that point, walked back about 75 feet and you can see where the decibel volume starts to drop. So that's going to be on, and I don't know if you have access to those videos.
No.
Yeah, I think you're both baby ears.
Yeah, who knows what happened?
I, I don't. I don't know what might happen. And Joe, can you jump for a, for a? Can you confirm that's not Brent's house? That's your house?
That's Brent's house. What are you talking about?
Wow, big remodel.
What's different? Where'd the trees go?
Yeah, so this was done at my house. And it was just convenient to be able to actually accomplish that while I was at home to get that baseline.
And you were 75 feet back that went, went on?
Well, no, when we first started, obviously you saw it was up about 100, 101. And then I walked back.
Joe, I'm not sure if it's helpful, you're going this direction. I don't want to go too slowly. Obviously, the whole point is that any noise that comes from the property would not be a nuisance at all to our neighbor. I'm not sure if you're going to show a video of our actual property. We took some of those videos.
We are.
One of the most, is that coming maybe, Joe? You want to do that or? One of the things that was telling to me is we had a boombox up as loud as it could go, it was 96 decibels on the deck. And again, by the way, I, I'm not sure there's any noise. The experiment also told me there's probably no noise from inside the home that ever reach our neighbor. Again, I'm not sure there's a video to show this. But I think we went back. It's about 200 feet is to the closest connection point to our neighbor's home. And as was noted, there's a lot of trees in the midst there. So at 96 decibels right by it, to the neighbor's home, it was only 34, 35 decibels. And so you could, you could hear it a little bit, but it was not strong at all. Maybe that's what's coming here. Yeah, but that just, so it was, it was helpful to show that, and obviously we don't want the neighbor to ever hear any noise, but and 96 was really loud, right? The thing, maybe we're going to show this video here and then explain that more then.
Is this on the deck or is this one tied with the lumber dump?
Just bring it up to here.
They're on the deck, okay.
And that's right at the property line.
And I think, Joey, also noted that the basic wind of the trees, like 36, 35 decibels there is the basic at the property.
Correct.
Outside.
Ambient sound that does occur. Now, one of the things that we did realize in this process, just that we can kind of minimize the amount of time that we spend up here and get to questions. We recognized that a 10 minute duration trigger was a bit too much. And so we actually went through and adjusted. So instead of the default 10 minutes, we lowered it to a five minute trigger. And then we also activated a phone call. So it's the SMS and the phone call and the flashing lights. That way at any given point, they're going to be notified. And then the other thing that Brent and I discovered is that we went through and we have probably one of the last videos, if we do want to take a look at that one. But we decided to actually have me go out to the neighbor's deck. I was standing right in front of it. And then we had that Milwaukee boombox turned all the way up maximum to the point where we started to actually adjust and turn down that level so that we can then go and coincide with the decibel reading to the point where it was not obnoxious or it was more palatable. As it was at that distance with it full blown, I could definitely hear it. It wasn't, it wasn't horrendous, but we got to the point where we decided it would make more sense to actually lower the baseline for notification for a guest. So instead of actually being at the 85, we adjusted and our, our new baseline level that we adjusted it to. And that's on 09. So if you want to move that to 09, so we changed that to the indoor noise at 95 decibels, outdoor to 75.
The video with 09, it's conversation outdoors? I'm wondering.
Look at it, take a look at it through details, the 21, 22.
As podcast. Boombox 100 feet away?
Yeah.
So we adjusted. So we adjusted based on my ear, my hearing that I had and what I could perceive. Probably more than the actual level of what the actual decibel X was picking up as far as an app goes. So I just used my perception, what I could physically hear. And then we adjusted the decibel trigger based on a lowered adjusted volume. And so we ended up employing that and we actually applied that as a universal setting to all of the units that we have. So this one basically for, based on what we discovered here was applied to every single unit that we have out in the field.
That's not those. Yeah, so close now. There we go. It's the last one, 29.
Okay, so. So overstimulated. It's fine. Okay. Okay. So this one, pay attention to the decibel numbers in the corner. The theory is while he's walking away, the numbers will change. Or you're not, you're staying, standing in the same place.
I'm standing in the same place and I'm actually communicating with, yeah. And Brent is turning down the volume.
Okay, I missed you.
So that was the baseline understanding of what was reasonable kind of a level. And knowing that it was 75, 85. Now, when you're actually having sound carry, there is a decent distance. There's obviously the trees that help mitigate some of the noise. And, you know, based on the time spent going through this, it was, you know, I want to say appropriate, but I think the easiest thing to be able to do in order to be a good neighbor is to just adjust the trigger warnings. And so we took down the decibels. And I think that's being able to actually shorten the, the time distance to actually send a first alert out, the second alert and then the third alert, lowering the decibel volume and adding the auto call has definitely improved on being able to identify any potential issues and then notifying the guest saying, hey, look, you know, you guys got to keep it down. And then the one thing that we did notice at this particular location and this could potentially translate to a, a different home that might be in a townhouse. No amount of noise that was created on the inside. Once that sliding glass door was closed, we walk away 10 feet from the house and you couldn't hear it. Even if it was at 90, at 100, it was virtually indistinguishable. And so as long as the noise is contained with inside the house, we'll get notified, they'll get notified. You know, keep it down. You know, keep it down. The main objective is to make certain that people are kind of aware of what they're doing. They have to have some sensibility about, you know, staying in someone's house as a, as a guest. And being able to at least reduce the 10 PM and under sound. That's going to at least notify the guests to note, hey, you know what? We got to keep it down. Any questions?
Here's what was the decibel at the, at your boombox when it was cranked all the way up. I'm just curious.
Uh, it fluctuated between ninety, ninety six. And it was maxed out at a hundred percent. So and I'm, I'm, you know, potentially guessing that it depends on the type of music that you're going to listen to. That's going to have, you know, a variation on how loud or what the deep decibel reading is going to be.
And then you bumped your alert level down to.
We did eighty five.
To eighty five.
Correct.
So if, if you're in the house and you make the, it breaks the decibel level, you get a warning and you get a phone call and you get a text message.
And flashing lights.
Flashing light. If you're, if you're outside.
Same thing.
Same thing. At the same decibel level as the inside.
Now, inside's going to be a higher decibel threshold. Outside's going to be lower.
Because why would outside be lower than if, if you had to say?
Well, because you have four walls. You typically have a sliding glass door. And if you do have the sliding glass door, if you're making a hundred decibel noise inside and you have that door closed, it's virtually unnoticedable outside.
So the sensing equipment is inside the house and outside the house.
Yes, we have two, one inside, one outside. So the one on the back deck is on the back deck.
It's about five and a half, six, about five and a half feet off the ground.
Although if a neighbor would exceed the decibel level at their house, depending on the proximity of the house, could that set off the other house?
That would have to be extraordinarily loud. Because you'd have to have at least a sustained five minutes that let's just say if it had to range 200 feet through the trees, you'd probably be a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty decibels. Consistent five minute.
So that could
Potentially.
Conceivable.
Very inconceivable. Not probable, very unlikely. Anything's possible.
I think we saw in this experiment that we lost about forty to fifty decibels uh, going from our property line to the neighbors. Um, and so obviously we, we turned the thresholds down so that um, and that was one of the videos is hard to hear. That we, I turned it down to a space of what was indistinguishable at the owner, the neighbor's property. And that's the new level we set the um, the thresholds at. So the neighbor ideally would almost never hear anything from our property. Uh, that was, that's kind of the, the goal. And I, and just some context again, I will say, um, you know, we obviously want to be a good neighbor as possible. I mean, these, these new devices are very helpful. I will give some context to say I've owned the home for four years. I've only had two uh, concerns that were raised about noise. Um, and one of those actually Joel was out there and we found that was a, um, that claim was not true. So we really haven't had noise issues at this property. And we also want to do everything we can to mitigate anything. Obviously there's lots of signage. Um, folks are aware we want to do because the goal is that my neighbor never has to be bothered or concerned. We've had a really good history to be honest, but these devices can help us even more. Um, and I would say most of the time, um, once a guest finds out they're have a concern, most of the time they immediately figure it out and they just get carried away. They quiet down. I think that would be Kelly and Joe's experience over many guests they've had. Um, but again, the goal is that, that no noise would impact. We've had a great track of it so far. But these devices will help us even more in case something pops up to uh, resolve an issue really quickly would be our goal.
And I do want to add one more thing. I was just looking at my notes. Just so that you have uh, complete clarity and we do have this in the record. Our original setting for the out, um, the outdoor noise was eighty five during the day, reduced it down to seventy five in the evening. So quiet hours was reduced down from seventy five down to sixty five. So it's very sensitive at that point. Anything else?
Is there's any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you, Joe. Meredith, staff report.
So I will jump to the we update memo that I gave you. Um, I think that that even though the sound did not work amazing in the um room that we're in, and I don't know how to project sound via my computer to do that. I'll figure that out for the next time. You have access to these videos and I will provide the same link on the website so that they can all be properly absorbed and heard in sound. For the record, I also shared the file with the um, neighbors so that they could look at the study and see if any adjustments could still be made. Um, the one note that I would have just related to this, um, so the sensor, there's one inside and then there's one, I believe it's on the exterior of the building, Joe, wherever you want it. Um, so the one like method thing that this commission might consider, knowing that the goal is to catch sound going to other properties. Some of the summer camps have placed um, outdoor um, sensors as close to a neighboring property boundary as they can, so that the decibel meter is, is catching the sound in the location it's running from. So if somebody carried that Milwaukee boombox not to do product placement, oops, um, or whatever boombox they have out into the backyard to go and play beer pong or whatever people do these days in backyards, there would be another device closer to the place that's trying to avoid noise that registers in that, in that system, right? Instead of just having your outdoor device be located on the house that might be actually generating the noise, you, you catch it from another angle, right? Uh, so you could consider that. Uh, the other thing to note and I've discussed this with um, the neighbors via email is that iPhones are not acoustic recording devices in their, their perfect form. So if we took a really expensive sound recording device out there, the levels would probably be different. Um, this is just an applicant's best effort to conduct a sound study on a location where there have been credible complaints of noise coming from one property to another. And what we're trying to achieve through this process is peace um, in between the properties so that there can maybe be a path for the conditional use permit to function if we can find that Goldilocks set of settings that can work and all of those different parties that are renting can be notified if they're a rowdy bunch. Now we've seen that, that they've caught some adjustments that weren't going on the right levels or required extended yelling for 10 whole minutes, which I don't even know if I could do on the workday of my life. Um, so now we have more reasonable durations to, to capture some of that misbehavior. But is it perfect? I, I don't know. Um, some of that, maybe we check during an annual report to see, you know, how did, well, probably we might miss, we, we wouldn't miss the Fourth of July or, or Labor Day in an annual report in that event because we would still have to get through ci- city council. But some of those things, think about the way that checking in on how these things are working can be built into an iterative process while we keep learning and these devices keep getting better. Um, and it, it empowers both the neighbors and the owner to make adjustments using technology that exists in the world to try and manage all of these competing uses um, under the state statutes that we have. So on that, within your 12 criteria, the main one you struggled with during the last deliberations was the one related to the generation of unreasonable noise um, that would affect neighboring properties. So um, we can go through those 12 criteria again. I can pull up any additional evidence that's been entered into the record. You can hear from um, the public, the neighbors at this point. And then just determine, you know, if we were to move forward, do you need to see another device located on a different location on the property? Um, what else might you need? Um, or what do you want city council to understand in, in the next step? If you feel comfortable going that direction. But with that, I can stand for any questions.
I'm sure it's any.
Are these GPS located monitors?
I don't know. Good question.
No.
Fair enough.
No.
Fair enough. Good. So you anyway.
Yeah, I, I guess, how are they, how are they attached in, in the residence?
They're screwed in the hall.
They're screwed in the wall. They are.
Do I need to state myself name again? All right. So the units are actually screwed to the, and affixed to a structure, whether it's going to be into drywall, drywall screws. If it's into the exterior siding, uh, siding screws that are put in.
Battery part or hardware?
They're battery operated. So long lasting. And we have a notification uh, telling us when the batteries are starting to go down and we'll actually get notifications on our N A batteries, you know, to 10%. They have 5%. And then we'll send out one of our maintenance team to go out and swap out the battery.
I, I really like this approach. Seems a little more scientific than waiting for a call from the neighbors, but I'm wondering, you know, how hard is it to, to game this, you know, throw a sock or a towel or something over the, over the sound reader?
It would be a challenge. I mean, anything is possible. I'm not going to dispute that it could be done. But that means that they'd have to screw or, or put something on top of it. The unit itself is relatively small, so it adds a fairly small footprint. And being able to, to cover it would be a challenge. So if you brought yourself a screwdriver or a power drill and you are going to end up wanting to do so, yeah, you could do it.
Yeah. I'm just curious. I think it'd probably be silly.
Yeah.
Issue anyways.
Correct.
Does the performance decrease as the batteries decrease of?
That it does not. Now, there's no diminishing uh, quality on the audio pickup. So if you have your battery that goes down, I mean, it'll last even, it, it's effective even down to 1%. And then when it hits zero, obviously it just goes off.
And you guys charge the management fee or included in your management fee, maintenance for the, for these units, right?
We do.
Why wouldn't it be hardwired to the units of, if you have electrical spurs? So you'd have a constant strong signal.
So if you're outside, one of the issues, because with, with, with the noise aware devices that we did, used to employ, people were able to game those. They'd unplug them. They'd take them off of those power supplies. Then, then you ended up having a problem. And that's why we
Possible. Okay.
So that's why we transitioned away from the noise aware company and went with Minute because it eliminated that problem. And that was an issue.
I think a question, um, and I think this was from way back regarding the parking. What's the point of eliminating two parking spots?
I believe with the site plan, we had received, um, I hadn't received an updated one that had parking spaces matching the number of bedrooms. Scroll to my most updated site plan. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yeah. So two would need to be removed to match the parking standards for short term rentals in McCall where there should be exactly one per bedroom that is advertised.
So Meredith, I think on the, when I submitted, there only are seven. Um, but I, I apologize if that was incorrect. I think on the notes, I think they showed, so we had more originally, but those reduced to seven.
Did you
To match the bedrooms.
Um, Brent, did you eliminate access to the inside of the garage?
Um, I think again, that is, we can do whatever the city council or the P and Z would like us to do. Uh, they're, they are available, but not required. Um, we can do whatever is deemed best. Obviously I know the rule of seven cars. Uh, and that will be the max we'll only ever allow. Um, obviously, as you saw in the video, the, it's kind of a circular driveway. They all connects to one another, but if, if, if eliminating them or using them is better, uh, we can, we can do that as well to base on what uh, the P and Z and city council prefer.
So you could adjust that to an updated parking plan that clearly reflects no more than.
They said, but I, yeah. Knowing the property, the way I know it, because I've experienced it way before any short term rentals were even an issue or discussed. I don't see replacing least within the diagram we have with vegetation because it's in the main.
Oh, the other part was when you go past the propane tank, cars have piled up.
Oh, that. Okay. So it's not.
It's not on the
Okay, okay. So back where the snow storage
Yeah.
Would be, okay. I was gonna say you can't re
No. Then you couldn't get inside.
Yeah, it doesn't make any sense. Okay. Cause I was gonna say usually more space is better than less because they're not parking in the road if there's guests or
Yeah.
daytime visitors.
Yeah.
Okay. But that's
Yeah.
And applicants okay with.
I don't know.
That part of that, it just
Yeah. That's just
Yeah.
applicable standard that I have to provide based on credible concerns I've received and cars parked in strange places in the backyard that are not on the parking plan.
Okay.
As I recall from last meeting, I think the concern was the previous uh, application had uh, more spots. And so we reduced it to seven. And I think I recall from our last meeting, the P and Z asked us to consider actually allowing for trailers to be on the property, which would need more square footage. So um, again, we, we had banned trailers, but I think in the last meeting, the P and Z said, we consider allowing trailers in there, which is, when we end up, we'll have to do whatever. But again, certainly, um, the way the driveway is configured, uh, there, there is access back to that back uh, garage play area that kind of chopping that up would be uh, a challenge for us. Um, but so there are things we can do um, to make sure there are only seven spots, but it's hard that could comply with that would be more difficult to be honest. But certainly only, only having seven there will always be the rule and we'll make sure that's, you know, in compliance with that.
More, Meredith, were there an idea of where, other than the snow storage area? Because I mean, the driveway does go back. The house was designed with the garage coming out the back if it ever is changed with use. Can't see saying they can't have that driveway, maybe no parking.
Yeah, that's kind of like the, the rock in the hard place that you guys get to deal with, including with that trailer question. Where, you know, in order to park something, you have to have improved service area. However, for short term rentals, they are not supposed to have more improved parking area than a normal residence of a similar size would have. That is not a very numerical standard. That's like a, a gut standard. But you have to ask yourself the question of, does the normal residence of McCall always, often, most of the time, or seldom, or on average, have multiple trailer parking spaces in addition to every single car that might be parked there? My experience, less than average and other people's experience of McCall, it might be more than average. It depends on the neighborhood that you're in, et cetera. This context being you have the parking standards for the short term rentals specifically. We try not to alleviate code in the conditional use permit process so much as use the tools that we have to meet the code. So for trailer parking in this instance, um, maybe the solution is make available the information that trailers can be parked overnight in the middle street parking lot um, for the public. Also, you don't have to do a 900 point turn on a very constricted public street, subject to snow plowing with that situation. In my ideal world, that's what we do here. Um, but this commission is ultimately the decider on that factor.
At this point, we're not asking for trailer parking. And I know before it was
We ended up kind of in a spiral.
Okay. So yeah, exactly. Exactly.
Yeah.
So we're not doing trailer parking. So we can just they're not allowing it for the short term rental. We're not allowing, are not showing it in any
Yeah.
Site plans or, okay. So and there is no trailer parking at this point in time.
Yeah. And if two cars show up and they can fit a trailer with their two cars in seven spaces, they fit in the allocated spaces for these.
Okay.
Yeah. Does that make sense, Brent?
Uh, yes, I, I think so. Um, I think, yeah, and I, I say it again, because I'm not sure, does a trailer count as a vehicle? And I mean, we, we actually um, early on banned all, all trailers back there. And so uh, that would be my recommendation, although I think last time there was some question, it'd actually be helpful to have some, but yeah, again, I, I think only seven vehicles total, and we prefer no trailers to be honest, because uh, this is the way that driveway comes out. It's a bit particular. And so we think it's just better for no trailers, but the city would demand we make trailer parking available. We'd find a way to do that, but that would be our recommendation to not do trailers there and just have seven cars only.
Yeah. So that's the, the scenario that we're functioning under where, you know, if one of the guests wanted to bring a trailer, they would need to use one of the seven spaces for car parking as the trailer parking. Otherwise
I'm sorry. Yes, yes. I misunderstood that. Yes.
Seven vehicles and six trailers. Those trailers need to be in the public overnight trailer parking area at Mill, Mill Park. Seven vehicles and six trailers, those trailers need to be in the public overnight trailer parking area at Mill, Mill Park, Mill Road parking lot.
So just to clarify what you said, if someone had um, five vehicles and then one vehicle had a trailer, that would be, the trailer would count as a vehicle spot, is that correct? That we just suggested, yeah, that makes total sense, yeah. Yeah, you wouldn't get it, so you'd be cheating with an extra trailer, yeah, for sure. Just seven, seven spots total, and ideally just seven vehicles max.
Yep.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, commissioners, any other questions for Meredith? Right, um, Morgan, engineer.
Hello, commissioners, this one's easy on my end. I've already issued final engineering approval. Um, there's some conditions in there such as um moving the existing pressure reducing vault away, farther away from the, from the driveway, and then they also need to upsize their water meter. Which are all part of that approval. That's all I have. Let me know if you have any questions.
Easy one. All right, commissioners, any questions for Morgan? Okay, with that, this is a public hearing, so we will open up for public comment. Is there anybody online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? And if you're on the phone and you're muted, you may need to hit star six to unmute yourself. Anybody here, anybody here in the audience that wishes to comment regarding this application? Well, you gotta be at least a year old to come.
Um, I'm Alex Killian. I was at 1020, but I read next door, so this is Nelson. Who does not like loud noises, noted. Um, I want to, there's some commissioners here that weren't here in the previous meeting. So I just wanted to add some context that they came with a, an application for a cup before and they were not recommended for approval here. Um, and then they withdrew the application. And then they continued to rent at high occupancy without that approval. So I just want that to be known. Um, and then they continue to get noise complaints that we had. And that we sent to the police, and so it was more than two than what Brett referred to, and we submitted those documents before. I do appreciate the tests that were done, but the noise things, I don't want to go in a rabbit hole there. Coincidentally, I lead a research center at Yale University that focuses on acoustic monitoring devices, and I work directly with Sony's top engineers to design these sorts of devices, and the test that was done was done backwards, and so there's major issues with how that was done. First, they should have primarily been using the minute uh, sound system as the, as the measurement. I saw they included some of those, but using the the phone application, it's a different device. Like, we don't care about what that decimal reading is, we care about what does the sensor that's going to trigger the alert read as. And so, um, then as Meredith noted, it's also important to note that, as you saw in those videos, which was helpful, as you walk away, the decibels decrease. And so, in those examples, they were playing a boombox at full volume right next to the sensor. Well, if I'm a guest and I'm gonna have a party, I'm not gonna do that, and all of our experiences before are guests playing music in the backyard. And so Meredith's suggestion about we need additional sensors farther away is warranted, so we need additional tests that need to happen there. And lastly, the five, so I appreciate their attempts to go from 10 minute of monitoring to five minutes of, you have to be above this threshold, right, for the alert to be sent. That um, particular device, you have to be above that five minutes the entire time. So if there's a second where that drops below, the deaf leftward track changes, the conversation pauses for a second, that five minutes resets. So that uh, setting is not, I think, applicable for this situation and isn't a realistic uh, alarm for, for this sort of situation. I'd be happy to provide like pro bono uh, services to the city to set legitimate standards for this to work. I do think it's a useful tool. Is it going to fix this problem? No. Having this many people in a residential area is not harmonious with the the residential uh, purpose and and long term residents that are there.
There anybody else here in the audience wishes to comment? Hey. Uh, once again, is there anybody else online or on the phone that wishes to comment regarding this application? All right, with hearing no more, close the public comment section. Uh, commissioners, any other? Oh, actually. So you guys want any comment back on any questions? Anybody?
I need to state my name.
Yes.
Kelly Hill, 278 Rahide, Lou, McCall, Idaho. Um, I just want to point out one thing is that this property is very large. I mean, not only the home, but the actual residence itself resides on a decent sized property. And there was um, a CUP that was already approved in this neighborhood on a much smaller lot. Um, so, um, to say that it's not conducive to this, you know, neighborhood, this is, he's actually only asking for 14 versus 16, is that correct? Yes. So, um, anyway, I just thought that would be noted, that if you're looking at that and all things being equal. This, this property is actually more conducive than the property that did get approved, so. I think that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Yeah, and if I can just add, um, I would say I'd be happy to work with Alex throughout the year. We again want this to not be any issues, so as he wants to come up with other creative solutions, we'd be happy to work with them uh, and make sure there are no incidents, uh, that would certainly be our goal, so I'm really happy to continue the conversation. Uh, because the ultimate goal is to make sure this is not a nuisance in any way, so I'm happy to have his expertise involved if that's, that's helpful.
Thank you, Brett. All right, commissioners, any other questions for staff or the applicant? Before we close the public? Here.
The one comment that I might make chairman, if I may, is you could um, today, if you wanted to send this to city council because it's becoming kind of a measurement and policy question problem, um, but if you want to get it at least the next step down the road. You could um, make any recommendation for moving onwards on the condition that there be a, a meeting between applicants and neighbors to conduct a more detailed study um, based on um, Mr. Killian's expertise. Um, it sounds like multiple parties are willing to participate in that type of event, and it would be my job to facilitate that sort of thing for city council to then review after everybody compares notes and is acting on the same protocol.
So in essence, the condition of our, of our approval.
Yeah.
Or recommendation for approval to the council. Commissioners, any other questions? We need to go through the CUP 12 criteria?
Do you want to go through them now, or is the public hearing still open? Did you close it?
I have not closed it yet. But we, I think we can close it before, we've done it both ways.
A bill floating in the sky.
Bill, close it and then go through it.
Yeah, you deliberate outside of the public hearing.
Okay, well, I just want, okay, I'll try with the 12, okay. With that, I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Right, public hearing is closed. And now we get our 12 criteria. I believe it's 12.
So your criteria for granting of a conditional use permit, the conditional use permit shall be granted only if the commission finds that the use as applied for, in fact, will one constitute a conditional use authorized in the zone involved. Short term rentals are a conditional use authorized in the zone involved. Two, it must be harmonious with and in accord with the general objectives and any specific objectives of the comprehensive plan and or this title.
I believe it's harmonious with the objectives. Items of comprehensive plan. In the title.
He thought it's why.
It fits within the codes. It's allowed potentially with a condition use permit, it's in the comp plan regarding that.
For three, it must be designed, constructed, operated, and maintained to be harmonious and appropriate in appearance with the existing or likely character of the neighborhood. And such use will not change the essential character of the surrounding area.
Then I don't believe there's any way that this cannot change the character of the neighborhood.
And I do think that we have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Liz.
Oh, I I do think that um, based on you know, legal decisions and and laws on the books, that uh, short term rentals are considered uh, like a residential type use, so from a, you know, law perspective, I think it is harmonious.
Now, the construction of the home clearly is designed for the area. It's one of the larger ones. It is one of the larger lots or a larger lot. And I do know there's multiple rentals throughout the neighborhood. In general, Spring Mountain Ranchers, they're spread out throughout the subdivision, the various phases, including one not too far away that we approved as well.
The, the last sentence of that. And that such use will not change the essential character of the surrounding area. I don't believe there's one other large at short term rental. Most of the other short term rentals are much smaller. Just the fact that we have had to listen to all of this testimony about noise problems and parking and just to me, will always indicate that these don't fit in a residential neighborhood. You can, you guys can vote.
There was another, there's another larger home three doors down that was approved.
I voted for that too.
Granted.
I don't know how you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Bill.
Uh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I thought that was, I could interject at this moment. Uh, this is one where as Meredith often says, you know, if we're going to say either it does or it does not. Or is or is not compliant with number three, this would be one where we would want to say why. So, you know, what is the essential character of the surrounding area and why does it or does it not? Uh, is it or is it not designed, constructed, and operated in a way that it's harmonious? And so, I mean, this would be one we would need the board to articulate that reasoning.
I believe it's constructed as the size of the house to originally house more people than what this application is for on a full time residency. Um, I think they've done everything they're working on to mitigate any outside noise factors. Including parking, everything, if so is a single family home, they could, or used as a single family home, they could have 20 people in there. And in the past, it was used that way with lots of extra people before we had some of these applications or these requirements. So I think it's done and it's positioned in a place to mitigate as much as possible. Um, Spring Mountain Ranch and all, anywhere anymore more of McCall is second and third family home or homes, so there is a lot of second home, vacation home use, so. To try to say there's one neighborhood that isn't or is, I think it's hard to say, that there isn't a neighborhood that doesn't have vacation rentals in it. So I feel that they're doing as much as they can, probably more than probably any other application we have seen to make it harmonious with the neighbor. With the noise sensors, really, that could be adjusted, but I I still think that they're doing more than in our application that we've seen, to make it harmonious.
I think um I just scrolled down to, there's got to be at least 40 comments from neighbors expressing opposition, so.
And that was a form letter sent out by the HOA and applicants were, or letters were saying that were quarter mile away. They don't even drive by the place, so I I don't disregard their letters, but it was an HOA form sent out, and every response we got back, 90% of the letters was a form letter. I take, you know, seriously comments from the surrounding neighbors, but ones that are quarter mile away, it's like, these neighbors have shown up to every meeting, yes. Not the 40 neighbors, but anyway, that's another thing.
You figure out how the language works for it's harmonious then. As Bill suggested. Well, an occupancy of 10 or less, it's not a question, right?
Correct.
A matter of adding four individuals. Raises very soon whether it's harmonious or not.
There was 40 oppositions to this, is that what you're saying?
Um, no, just in the package, there's, there were various letters in it, there's, look at it, I don't think it's worded though.
I don't think quite a few.
So the house hasn't changed. My view, it's when they came to do this short term rental, I don't think they changed anything. Provenance to, well, maybe I don't know that, but originally the house was constructed that way, what's there is what's there. So essentially, we're just looking at a number of people that are there. Can't change what's there, I guess. Part of it, even as part of Spring Mountain, they have the review process for when they construct these things. Design review process, so it was meant to be a large house, so. You know, for this to be harmonious, I'd be curious to see uh, if we do approve this thing coming back in the year, I would assume we would be able to see that again. See how the wind ever port on it. That's what the previous one and the conditions of this too. Yeah. So I don't think it's the last touch on this. Certainly see how this technology works. Maybe there's other things that can be done between this meeting and city council meeting, as Meredith has mentioned. If there's anything else to make, there's some suggestions already, and they refer those, because that makes sense. And I think there's definitely effort to try to get, make this work, so. I value your effort.
That, I think the general use. It fits the harmony, the harmonies between neighbors is what it seems like to me, and if there's additional conversation, then maybe some agreement that can can be met, I think there, as far as the sound goes. And I think that's a criteria that helps find a good situation. As far as it being a house and having cars and, you know, if it wasn't a short term rental. You potentially have three, three families in there, multiple generations, and like you see in a lot of places that have the kind of gentrification that we do, you'll see that. And you'll see six or seven cars, think about, let's select Hawaii where that's happened, that happened for a while now. And so that, just as a general just as, as it would be under a normal situation, I think so, but I think if there can, can be some kind of agreement that can be met where the, the sound testing. Kind of agreement that can be met where the the sound testing. Is done to a, to a level that can be agreed upon there. Yes, I think you'll have the tools to evaluate what and when those issues are happening. Could see, it's a complaint that's tied to the, the sound, you, it's an opportunity to prove that, that it can happen.
Really, they've tried real hard to, with the sound system and the monitoring, uh, with the way it goes, to make this as acceptable as possible. I didn't realize that, that we had such an expert in the group here, that there's certain things that can be tweaked. And if they work together on, on the whole process, I don't, I don't see a real problem from the sound standpoint. It's a more sophisticated way of doing it than I've ever heard before, uh, but I don't know a lot about that kind of stuff anyway. But I think they're trying really hard to make it acceptable to the neighbors and also to, uh, to give a, you know, kind of a, a way for other people to come up to the standard. You like this, they realize this is a real tough situation and they're monitoring just very effectively. And I think it's gonna, gonna pay dividends as far as how people are gonna treat the, the facilities under there.
Thoughts in the same?
Um, yeah, so my, my thoughts are more aligned to item eight, as opposed to the harmonious point. It's more the noise point. Um, I am concerned about, you know, kind of some of the history of this. Uh, property and, you know, the previous issues that have happened. I also understand that there was, um, you know, not clear understanding of what the, the rules actually were. And that since that has been clarified, it's been much better. Um, I would like to see how this works in practice, uh, of how it actually. You know, whether or not it does, uh, help resolve the, the concerns. I would be interested in maybe having this revisited in a couple months, as opposed to a full year, to give us time to course correct. Um, if needed, so that's just kind of my instinct. And I really like the idea of putting in an additional condition to meet with the neighbors to discuss what. Um, the neighbors deem as reasonable noise settings, so the, the noise monitors are triggered in a way that is meaningful. Yeah, that's where I'm at.
Think that addresses item four as much as we can.
Four, you jumped to health, safety, and general welfare.
Oh, that's all fine. Three, anyway, takes care of item three.
Okay. Uh, use shall not be detrimental to health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use. Why or why not?
Don't believe there's anything that would cause any health or safety issues. Also, I mean, they actually have more access and land for safety as far as driveways. Other than one and people backing in and out, but they do have the circular driveway to. Have people, not less people backing in and out in the extra areas to back up alongside the, the boundary as well. So I think that's, that's safer than a lot of other homes that only have one way in and out.
Number five, it shall not cause any substantially harmful environmental consequences to any land or waters within the planning jurisdiction.
I don't see how this use would have any substantial harmful environmental consequences, people renting a house.
Number six, it shall not create excessive additional public cost for public facilities and services. And will not be detrimental to the economic welfare of the community.
See any items for extra public costs. Couldn't be any. If anything, you got groups of people that are here to spend money.
Yeah, you got a lot of money to spend, it's true. Plus with the house, I think.
Yeah.
Okay, number seven, it shall be served adequately by essential public facilities and services, including highways, streets, police, and fire protection. Drainage structures, refuse disposal, water and sewer, and schools. The applicant may be required as a condition of approval to mitigate any deficient public service.
Which is the case with upsizing of the water. And their using down. Pressure reducing down.
Those are part of final engineering, right?
Correct.
Yes.
Number eight, it shall not involve uses, activities, processes, materials, equipment, or conditions of operation. That will cause unreasonable production of traffic noise, smoke, fumes, glare, odors, or other forms of pollution. And why or why not?
Anybody else that's. Go ahead, Liz.
Okay, well, speaking of traffic, um, based on the, the fourteen people, as opposed to the maximum, based on the parking. Um, you know, limitations and rules, I don't think traffic's an issue. Um, I don't see any production of smoke, fumes, glares, or odors coming that are, you know, significantly related to, you know, short-term rentals. Uh, going back to other forms of pollution, it really just, for me, comes back to the noise and, uh, just see my comments on number three.
I think we're doing, or they're doing mitigation factors to keep the noise level down. I think again, more so than any other homeless out there that we've seen.
Would you like on this one to see an additional monitor added in the backyard?
We do that in our.
Well, you'd want to discuss whether that matters on this criteria, yeah.
I could see the potential of having one closer to the neighbor. And that sensor there, so it would kick in just in case somebody was back away from the property. It's something, because the property goes back away, so I could see that potential.
There are things, there, there's four sides to that. Uh, people on all sides, maybe not the back as much, but to both sides and the front across the street. So, how far do you go with that? You put the one in all four locations, um, to what extent?
Well, certainly, there's two neighbors, two monitors in the corners of. This property. That will actually trigger, what triggered the warnings would certainly improve the situation. But I think. I like Liz's suggestion that this gets revisited sooner than a year. Like, you know, this will get theoretically approved, city council, uh, so we'll have a summer to get through.
And it's like the year process, just because, I mean, we give it a season. Because, again, by the time you get through, we're gonna be through most of the summer season, you're gonna get a little bit in the fall. In the winter, you're really not gonna have as much outside, plus it's gonna be buffered with the snow. To me, a season makes sense, and they're coming back in front of probably staff, or unless there's issues. By the PC, it just, because I, I think it's reasonable to have a season's worth of data.
Season, season or a year?
A year, I'm sorry. Well, it's kind of a season. A many years' worth of data. Yeah, but, and again, because I know this house and this property as much as I do prior to any application. If anything's gonna be going on outside, it's gonna be up back. You're not gonna have it up front typically. If you're already just in passing, it's not gonna be somebody hanging out. Very, very rarely, just not conducive for that. Everything brings everybody to the back. So if you have one either centered in the back area, or the most sensitive is probably to the neighbor to the west. But somewhere in that general area, I think, would make sense and would cover probably both neighbors that are gonna be most affected. The backyard goes to the Noakes property, so there's nothing, there's no houses to the very back, it's just to the east and west side of it. And again, to just, it, it doesn't make sense, anybody's gonna hang out in front for any length of time. I mean, you may come and go a little bit, but it's not gonna be something where I would see a sensor, it would make sense.
To go to, or would you just say one?
I mean, we've never really had the neighbor to the one side say much, I, I, I don't. I think one may be centrally located to the back area, so it would cover from either side or just, I mean, I mean. And that could be some of the discussions with the neighbors that they discuss, I mean, they've already.
Can also keep your language general.
Yeah, I mean, a sensor in the back area most effective, something like that.
So that means three.
Inside, outside, one in the back of the house, and then one in the backyard area.
Or they, they move the one that's on the deck.
Well, I mean, they could do that, because I mean, yeah, I mean.
Additional on the exterior boundary of the property.
That sounds good. I think that would alleviate some concerns and. Like, say, and I like the idea or the concept of this being reviewed. Does it be, the system could be something that we model or use somewhat as a model in the future for future applications. Actually, that's obviously separate from this one, just a thought.
Great for number nine.
Yes.
Check number nine, it shall have vehicular approaches to the property so designed as to not create, as not to create. A detrimental interference with traffic on surrounding public or private thoroughfares or adversely affect the pedestrian environment.
Have a nice through driveway. The busy street.
Number ten. Number ten, it shall not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of an important natural, scenic, or historic feature.
Does not apply, there is no historic. Statue there somewhere.
Not that I know of. I'm just trying to think, there actually was a great bison, uh, statue in the front, I'm not sure if it's still there, but I got a picture of it with my granddaughter.
Eleven?
Yeah.
It must be on a site of sufficient size to accommodate the proposed use, including the yards, open spaces, no storage walls, fences, parking areas, loading zones. And design standards applicable.
Believe the site's one of the larger ones there, and it looks good, and has, it takes care of all those items. It is a one, a larger parcel for that area.
Twelve, shall have a minimal negative economic impact on the neighborhood or surrounding community.
But this will be one that I struggle with always. Um, I don't think any of us sitting up here would willfully buy a house next to a small hotel if we choice. So it will negatively impact surrounding properties.
I could make the flipside argument, though, where if I was looking to buy a second home. The fact that I could have the potential to rent it out as a vacation rental might increase my likelihood of buying it. So I don't think we can say with any certainty how the, you know, short-term rental or not of this size would have an economic impact.
And again, Dave, with the law, we cannot describe this as a hotel. It's in Idaho state law through the Supreme Court, and we cannot identify this as any type of motel. It's not, it's an allowed use, potentially, but as far as the impact for the community, I mean, it's, I don't see a negative impact. I do it all the time and mirror what Liz had said, to get people asking all the time both ways. Are they allowed or are they not allowed? More so are they allowed, but I don't see it, I mean. That area, Spring Mountain Ranch, keeps its value. Of all areas in town, that's one of the areas that's kept its value. I haven't seen anything, and that's, goes to a whole nother thing as far as trying to figure out what actually is negative. But I do not see that that would. And as long as it's, you know, with the conditions also that we are looking at potentially doing to maintain. The other items, the noise things and, and everything else that the property management company is doing, that's not just a free-for-all. As we have seen in the past before, we've had some of these new ordinances and regulations.
And we still do. Which is my whole point about these. You know, I, I believe Mr. Peterson has the right to use his property as he wishes to, but I also believe the neighbors have the right to quiet enjoyment of their property. And they have been there much longer, so this will always be an issue that, um. You know, it's nice, we have these twelve things, but again, you can, what's a minimal, what's minimal, you know, we can argue about that all day, so. Carry on.
I think that addresses that item.
That's all twelve of your criteria, so. If you'd like to challenge your friend Liz to a, a motion that includes some of those other additional things, you can do so. You can continue further coming and hying and deliberation, uh, but the only duty I have left for you is to do something.
All right.
Uh, so I guess a couple questions, the one was, and we did talk about it, but. It, is it possible to have a CUP that is less than a year timeframe? Or is that just standard of?
I mean, I think we made it up, Bill.
We had the review, or was it condition of approval? The CUP continues for the use of property.
Unless you impose a different expiration term.
Or, yeah.
Yeah.
So it's not for a year, then we can put anything up.
So expiration is different than review. Expiration would be, do you want it to live with the property regardless of who owns it? Would you like it to be tied to the ownership? So if there's a change of ownership, then the new owner has to come back and go through all over again, I don't know, that's a question. But the review timeline is different, where for, I believe, one or two of the previous conditional use permits that have gone through. There has been a required annual review that includes occupancy information, um, the resolution to any complaints or disputes. Or nuisance reports that arise on the property, um, both from like an objective, like here's the noise report from an incident. Um, or here's a police report, I've never had a police report in one of these reviews, um, and here's how we dealt with it as property management and ownership. Um, and then this one would, of course, review actual function of the noise monitoring system. Because this is probably the most sophisticated example of the noise monitoring system, even though we're still working out quirks. But I believe in terms of timing of review, if this commission feels that it's necessary to do tighter increments, at least initially. Um, I, I believe you have that discretion and authority.
I agree.
Where's the tweet from, Bill? Merit is going to work.
Big bucks.
I make a motion, we give Meredith a raise. Oh, wait, that's our next, that's our next item on the agenda, sorry. Okay. So with that, it is open to options. I think seeing the other one that we had approved that went through the one year came through back for evaluation. Everything seemed good at that point. So when the one year would come back to us and not staff on that one, because everything came back pretty clean. And we, you know, did it another year and then kind of put it in staff's you know, hands at that time, if it needed to come back, if there was any issues. So to me, I can really see this one falling in basically the same category. Especially, I think this is even better noise monitoring than we had on the other home. The other home, same basic amount. I believe it was approved for 14. But again, it gives the year, not season, but the year to evaluate what they're doing. We get all the you know, see all the information as far as if there is any complaints, what they've done to resolve those complaints. And I think allowing a year keeps the onus on the property management company and the owner to keep it going to where six months over, they're going to be heavy duty on six months. No, this is going to be constant. That's not just, oh, well, we go through six months or four months. Really crack the whip on it. Now it's going to be the whole year we're watching it. But I think that puts it out there and hopefully we give the community a sense of that, that it's being monitored for a standard period of time.
And Mr. Chairman, can I add one thing? I don't mean to interrupt you.
Yes, Bill.
Did you? Okay, thank you. I'm just looking at McCall City Code three thirteen oh three sub C. Number two, you can include limitations on the length of the time that a conditional use permit may be exercised before will expire by its own terms. So that's why Meredith Meredith was right.
Okay. And with that, I don't see it's fair to the applicant to expire the permit because then they have to reapply and the costs and everything. And I don't feel that that's a reasonable, let's say, I think a review instead of an expiration, in my opinion, makes more sense. That's my thoughts.
So then that review would be this time next year.
We could do it maybe the beginning of summer.
I think it's a question of what?
Yeah.
What data points in time do you want to be able to see?
Yeah.
You know, knowing that this might get completed by around Labor Day. That's one good data point. But it obviously won't be completed by the Fourth of July, so you won't have the fourth of this year, at least on a six month review.
Maybe August first is timeframe, I mean, or actually Labor Day, but I can see maybe through it up through August because July is going to be your peak time or mid July, I mean, or mid August, but just thing out loud, I could do Labor Day. I mean, I'm good with the one year from city council approval.
You're saying city council won't be till Labor Day?
It takes at least four weeks to get noticed and scheduled.
So that's basically one year initial approval by city council. So that's Labor Day. Then the other stuff, if we do that, which sounds fine to me to allow the time. The noise was the big thing that we've been talking about. So is there, what kind of language would be? I want to I don't want to be restrictive on the language. I don't want to allow that applicant and some interaction with the neighbors and what Meredith was mentioning. But I'd like to maybe we create some sideboards on that. So but I I'm struggling with what you say for that. And I don't want to say we're going to add three more sound detection devices on this. It's, you know, have sounded detection system that close to the the property edge adequately detects sound. It's certain, I don't know. That's, what do you say? That's open ended enough. That's
Maybe applicant to provide council a revised noise sensor location plan.
Or what if you did prior to scheduling a hearing before the McCall City Council, the applicant must conduct a to additional controlled sound study monitoring with neighbors and identify additional recommended locations for monitoring on exterior property boundaries.
What she said. Yeah. So moved. Yeah, that's good.
Can we add to that the the settings that are actually in place on the monitors?
And include recommended settings to apply to each monitor device.
Is this a role location?
I don't know. Each device might be different. Let science speak for that.
Now, I I think it's it's it seems to be a much more logical approach to have the sensors on the property boundary. So so.
I think having it there also gives them, their people on the porch, that notification with the light flashing. You know, but it may not be as loud for that other sensor, but they're going to get this notification before it gets too loud. So I like the multiple locations. Does we give them more of a heads up, the less likely it's going to continue to be loud. So I think additional ones would be nice. Not removing any. I think that'll avoid everybody having, hopefully, having any headache. With that, any other thoughts, concerns, ideas, patterns where I'm open to a motion?
The only other thing we were going to talk about was the parking spaces.
Yeah. If you were to revise that one to be better, you could request that prior to either approval by the city council or public hearing for the city council, they provide a revised site plan to show only seven accepted parking spaces. Stuff.
So that's what they have on here, right?
Um, it's not really clear because it doesn't show any indication of no to garage or any plan to stop things from going back behind that propane area. So there's not really the human factors involved.
I move to recommend approval of CP twenty three ten with the staff recommended conditions of approval.
You could say as modified.
As modified, yes.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval with staff, my fight, recommend recommendations of approval. Uh, Meredith, let's do a roll call.
Hey, Chairman Lyons.
Yes.
Commissioner Petty.
No.
Commissioner Rock?
Yes.
Commissioner Moss?
Yes.
Commissioner Milfe?
Yes.
Commissioner Thompson?
Yes.
And Commissioner Paul is us.
That motion is approved. And they give and okay. That moving on to design review twenty four twenty eight scenic route twenty four eleven four fifty Sampson Trail, and I know we have
You might take like a three minute break because we talked to Commissioner.
Okay, um, yeah, we're going to take a quick break. Sorry about that. My last day for a second.
Didn't even tell us.
Yeah. Nature fall, so we take a quick couple minute breaks.
Go and help today.
Okay. We will start the meeting again. Okay, this is a public hearing. With that, I make a motion, we open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion is second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman Commissioners. For the record, Abby Germaine with Elam and Burke, two five one East Front Street, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven zero two. I'm here on behalf of the applicant represented by Kami Chanis, Mike Keller, and Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. We are seeking approval of the scenic route and design review applications related to the self-storage facility out on Sampson Trail. This is not a new project to you. We have been in front of this commission multiple times. Uh, in fact, in thinking about it today, we have been in front of the commission on these applications for almost a year and a half now. As a procedural recap, just for a reminder, uh, the Board of County Commissioners has already approved the use at this property. Um, the conditional use permit that was granted by the county commissioners allows for self-storage on this property and self-storage will be built on this property. The commissioners, um, remanded the scenic route and design review applications back to this commission to talk about the aesthetics of how this project would look. So turning back to the last conversation we had with you all, we were here in front of you on May twentieth um, to discuss the project and seek approval of these two applications. At that time, we had drastically revised the site plan. If you will recall, originally this application proposed four buildings on this site. When we came back to you in May, we had actually removed the third building and only had two buildings left on the site. In addition to that reduction in an actual building, we also changed the orientation of the buildings to go from north, south to east, west. What that did, as you will remember, it increased the setbacks from Sampson Trail as well as reducing the frontage of the building facades on Sampson Trail, allowing view corridors through the property. During the deliberations, um, on May twentieth during that hearing, a majority of the commissioners found that the revised site plan did meet the criteria of scenic route and design review. However, there were questions about how the fence and the colors of the building should look. Um, the discussion rev- revolved around whether or not to approve the applications with a condition of approval to have staff work with the applicant on the design of the fence and the colors of the building, or whether the commission wanted to opine on those. Ultimately, instead of approving the applications that night, the commission requested that the applicant come back with proposed renderings of fence designs and colors for the facades of the building. So that's what we are here in front of you this evening for. Um, it is a limited scope to discuss the fence and the building colors. We have provided those renderings. They are in your packet. I think Meredith already has those up on the screen. So Jeff is here and he can certainly jump into those options. But I'd like, um, to to stand for any questions if the commission has any. Otherwise, um, I know we've been here a while this evening and we can jump into the meat of deciding how the fence and the building should look.
Any questions?
Thank you, Abby. Jeff Hatch with Hatch Design Architecture. Our address is two hundred West Thirty Sixth Street, Boise, Idaho. Good evening, Chairman Lyons and Commissioners. Thank you for your consideration of our application tonight. Next slide. It's a brief recap. Our property is just off of, uh, north of Cron Lane on Sampson Trail. Uh, that would be the blue box directly to the west of us. We have an approved self-storage facility, some industrial uses, commercial uses to the south, and then residential to the north, as well as across, uh, the street to the east. Next slide. So as far as the proposed fencing from our last discussion, uh, we went back and looked at a couple of different options based on your feedback. Think that the wood look vinyl is a good durable product that has low maintenance and is is pretty, uh, attractive for many years to come. To offset that is kind of a balance and something that has a little bit more transparency, which we discussed. We're proposing the cedar and wire mesh fencing. So that is a fencing that still has wood elements to it, but also is transparent because it has that wood mesh. And so in the following slide, I have a series of combinations. One of those combinations is this two panel system, which you see on the right. And then the other option with the wire mesh is we just have, uh, round log style posts. And then that mesh goes all the way to the ground. So you have more transparency with the two panel, you have a little less transparency and a little bit more wood. That'd be really kind of the the two main distinctions between those. Uh, next slide. So with that, our option one for consideration, we have the two panel fencing, which will, you know, from plan left, left side of of this elevation, it would be the south. So this is the south. So this is essentially where we have our stormwater retention and our and our driveline. And then we would be screening portion of the building with that vinyl fencing. And then we would be screening portion of the building with that vinyl fencing, and then opening that back up just at the service entry. And option two. That would be a very similar option, except that we're doing that that uh, instead of a two-panel. Wire mesh fence, we would just be doing a pole wire mesh fence, and so that's that wire mesh that's all the way down, that is a little bit more trans. Parent. And option three. We've taken a a little bit of a different strategy and we're doing more of an asymmetrical style, so we start with the solid fence on the corner. And then we're adding the solid vinyl fencing. Uh, basically where the where the driveline is on the south and sporadically along that front facade. But intermittently putting that wire mesh fence in. And then our option four, very similar layout to the previous one as far as that asymmetrical layout. But with this, this would be that uh, wire mesh that goes all the way uh, to grade. Kind of like, kind of like three and four? Yeah, having the solid vinyl um, broken up a little bit more and in the driveline. Um, is nice, but if you guys prefer having it just so solid along the building, we could certainly do that as well. And uh, moving on, we do have our renderings, which we do have samples, if there are any questions on any of the finishes, we did bring those up here so we can. Touch, feel, look at, examine. Um, so came up with three iterations for consideration, one is our. Uh, rendering, which we call the gray, so this would be, you have Doug fur, but that Doug fur is more in kind of a gray tone. And then we use a gray metal paneling as the accent for that. Next rendering. So, the next rendering, our wood look panel is is more of an authentic. Uh, cherry. And then our metal panel is kind of a red tone brown to that to match in tone and character. Then our third iteration. Did one that was in greens and browns, and then this, the wood tone is um, a slightly lighter tone of cherry. With that, I will stand for any questions.
The fencing option. Um, option two, so it's it's a variation of the wire mesh, but it's the full. Six foot. Right, is that right?
So both uh. Both option one and option two, as well as option three and four are all six foot, so the height is is not distinguishable, the mesh itself. Comes in in a panel. Um, which is boxed in a cedar frame, and so in option one, that cedar frame. Uh, stops at three feet, and so you have two series of panels with wood that intermittently braces those. If we're wanting something that is truly more transparent, option two provides that with a full height, so we have a support race at the top. It ties into wood posts and then down below, but nothing in the in the middle, so a full six-foot span, right?
Well, this would be looking west, you know, Sampson, Scottson and Grill, right? The pictures that you got there.
So if you're driving on Sampson Trail, you'd be looking west.
Correct. Yes, sir. And then all the fencing around it. Commissioners, any other questions for the applicant before we go to staff? Thank you.
Thank you.
So, as Jermaine and Mr. Hatch reviewed, um, the two main things that this commission requested. To see following the uh, May twentieth with hearing was more detail on the fence and then some exhibits or options. On the exterior finish materials to. Beautify or enhance the community character or character or judge, there are a lot of different terms. Um, utilized to just make the building more appealing um, to an outward audience as well as the property as a whole. Um, to that end, again, we're at a pretty um. Subjective, squishy stage in terms of your judgment, where I can't decide for you which one. Which fence option of the floor or which siding option of the floor makes you feel any better or any different. Um, all I have is the criteria for you guys to deliberate on. When it came to the criteria at the time, I believe those that you got up on were. Were specifically um, criteria related to scenic route zone compliance and. The requirement for the project to preserve and enhance the scenic quality of the street or highway, the street being South Sampson Trail. Um, the specific criteria for scenic route review and and approval. Are that the commission shall ascertain whether the proposed development, improvement, or use will. One, block or disrupt the visibility of significant views or features. On May twentieth, you didn't seem to have much consternation with significant views towards West Mountain or any other direction. Um, especially given the development of the storage units behind, um, if you can even see West Mountain from this point. You probably need to be standing and paying attention for a while, so that consideration would be for the neighboring property owners. To the east and what direction they're looking at each day out their windows. Um, but the commission seemed to struggle a bit with. Being compatible in terms of setback bulk height, design, finish materials and landscaping with its immediate surroundings. And the desired visual quality of scenic route, so as a reminder, the desired visual quality of the scenic route. Um, most of those designated in McCall are not there yet, and so that they can get to the level of feeling. As one does as you go down um, Spring Mountain Boulevard between um, the middle school and Lake Creek Meadows, where we have a nice separated pathway. You meander, sometimes you join the road, sometimes you split, there's trees, sometimes there's houses, et cetera. Um, but our commercial zone scenic routes include Third Street where we see street trees. The northern section of Mission Street area. That might be the only ones, the other ones we have East Side Drive and Warren Wagon Road, um, but this is kind of a unique context. Because it's a section of commercial designated scenic route frontage that exists in the impact area. That does not have an asphalt meandering pathway or a similarly shaped development pattern at this point. Um, your role as the commission is to determine what standard do you want to set for the segment of the. Of the scenic route as it hopefully comes to fruition, regardless of how the impact area discussion shakes out into the future. So with that, um, your job is to determine. Which of any of these exhibits make you feel any better, different? Um, does it sway you in the direction of approval and why, does it sway you in the direction of denial and incompatibility and why? Um, and with that, I can stand for any questions, but this is really your arena.
Am I correct that there's no fence in front of building two? Maybe that's a question for.
I think to look at the site plan and the numbers.
Still have a mass building there?
Mr. Petty, um, in front of. The building on the northern side, we've never had a fence. For a year and a half.
The wall of the building is the fence.
Yeah.
So if you take, if you take a look at this one right here, this was the front of the building and this was the back of the building? I see that right? Or this is the Sampson, South Sampson Trail side, and the one next to it is.
Here on sheet eight-four-oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's to the west.
So this would be faced with the one with no uh.
Nothing on it.
Okay, that which which way is that facing?
Mr. Moss, that would be facing the self-storage facility to the west.
Yes, I got confused because the renderings show a little bit of fence down there, but.
Commissioner Petty, we do have a portion of fence that would terminate the entry gate and the emergency access gate into that building. Um, but we are using essentially the building as the the perimeter security. To help hold the landscaping further into the property.
It's probably this jog.
It's a jog, and then the math in the packet doesn't show fencing. Some like the southeast corner of building one to the corner, but your. Fencing designs do, correct? Yeah.
That's it, that should be.
It's those, right, that go all the way along Sampson. Those choices. There's no gap along Sampson.
There is a separation at the building. Which we discussed, and then other than that, we would maintain that fence running south along our property.
All the way to the corner.
Correct, okay.
And this used to have a concrete retaining wall on the south side. And. Fence above that.
There's the snow fence on the north side, too. And no other proposed changes to the fencing plan.
Commissioners, any other questions before we go to engineering? Hey, Maury.
Thank you.
Hello Commissioners, um, I don't have much of an update for you on this. On this version of the application, uh, my engineering review number four still stands. Um. Which is mostly general comments that can be finalized in final engineering approval with final engineering approval. Um. But I could go over some of those comments if that would be helpful.
Review, thank God. There's much with this, there's not.
Yeah.
And maybe just reiterate the pathway and a couple of things, that was put within setbacks now better than it was.
Yeah, the moving of the pathway was really integral to this with the Valley County's pathway department. Um, it has been moved and it's in a better location now. Um, from what was submitted previously. I did note in engineering number four that there was a discrepancy between the civil plans and the site plan regarding fencing that you were mentioning. Um, and that the southern property line has a retaining wall that varies in height. Um, but at its highest, it's around seven and a half, seven-point-eight feet. Um, and I didn't know if the fence was on top of the wall or if it was the wall. Um. Because they're sinking that side of the property, so. I didn't know if that wall, if that fence was still going to be on top of that. Um, the stormwater materials will likely meet the drainage management guidelines, um, there were still a few minor comments that needed to be addressed. Um. And then just updating the plans again, so that the the fencing matches between all the plan sets that we're reviewing. Let me know if you have any questions.
Commissioners, any questions for Maury? Okay, this is the public hearing, so we're gonna open up for public comment. Uh, is there anybody on the phone or online that wishes to comment regarding this application? Again, you may need to hit star six if you're muted. Then mute yourself.